Okay, at this time we're getting ready to get started. If everyone will please stand so we can have pledge and prayer. And the patient is going to be given by Commissioner Owens today.
Let's pray. Gracious Hail and God, we are blessed to have a great nation. Lord, we celebrate this week that nation and our independence. So, we just thank you for your care, your guidance over this country. Lord, we thank you for our county, our citizens today. Lord, we just pray that whatever we do today, Lord, it will be in accordance with your will. These things we ask of Jesus, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, neutral, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Gates County Board of Commissioners to work for July 3rd, 2019. First item on this agenda is to approve the amendments for our regular meeting on June 4th, 2019, special meeting June 12th, 2019, and now special meeting on July 17th, 2019. What is the pledge of the board? Concerning the amendments. I sent in some corrections, so we'll forward.
I, Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the amendments as the amendments are made from education and otherwise.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, at this time, any question? Hearing none, all those who favor to approve the amendment as corrected, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. And I do have two adjustments to make. Under public hearings, there will be no resounding request for Helen Haines' parcel. So you need to strike that off your list. That is number six. And add under new business, eight, the EMS contract. I believe we received an email concerning that. Also, in a closed session, and we will have a closed session, but the only thing we will be discussing is personnel. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. In discussion, hearing none, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, our first, the Knights, we have no Knights delegations, and we have one person for our own Knights, Reverend Kiper. Please state your name and address. And good morning.
I didn't hear that last word.
I said, "Good morning." Address. Your name and address.
Reverend Robert Kiper, 528 Center River, Ahoski, North Carolina. Okay. I'm here representing the American Legion Post 102 in Ahoski and also the Amber Watson. So I understand it's going to come out without foreclosure on her property. And we got four Rev. About 10 days ago, and the American Legion State of North Carolina has granted a request of $1,500. And American Legion Post 102 in Ahoski has also given $350, which is $1,850. And her tax on it was $2,100 and something. And we're in the process of raising the other $300-plus dollars. And so we would like, we're trying to help her, she's a veteran, and we would like to have at least one more month to raise that $300. And that's just our request.
I will respond. I know that our tax administrator worked with people and sets up payment plans, so that's very permissible. Okay, excuse me, Ms. Lane.
Yes, ma'am.
And she is our tax client.
Yes. Reverend Reverend Kiper and I have, so, good morning, by the way.
Good morning.
We spoke, as well as a former Commissioner from Hurford County called on Friday, June 21st. Ms. Watson is in the batch submission for your foreclosure list presented this morning to Zacchaeus. We had over two years, still two years of delinquency for Ms. Watson. We did get a partial payment, a partial payment only. Our letter, our process is very specific. It's the standard process of the submission. Every summer, we present to the board, of course. And of course, we apply the money accordingly. We don't turn it away. But what happens to XYZ citizen on Drumhill Road who has the same scenario with only a portion of payment, did we not follow our protocol with that as well? Delinquent letters were mailed May 3rd stating a specific, and I can read that verbiage if the board cares to hear it, that Ms. Watson received. We didn't get any response at that time from Ms. Watson until Friday, June 23rd. Former County Commissioner from Hurford County retired and everything. There's a service called me stating what the American Legion goal was. But here we are Wednesday morning, we haven't gotten a payment yet. So, all I know is I follow a standard. I'm transparent in nature. Whatever the board would decide, that would be up to the board. And Reverend Kiper wanted to speak this morning, I told him by all means, I'm not going to say, "We can do this for you and XYZ citizen." You know, I don't make that decision. That would be a board decision. I will remind the board that currently, we have, let's see, we did get a payment of $350. Currently, we've got $1,777.82, or 17 and 18 taxes unpaid. That's where we are with this particular situation. Whatever the board would decide, we'd be, certainly for the board, know I follow a process and I'm consistent in nature with all delinquent properties. That's what we have.
Okay, Ms. Board, when I was paying in a bike, what payment plan for?
Yes, ma'am, before we get to this one.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Mr. Kiper, and we'll take a break.
May I say one other thing?
Yes.
The American Legion State of North Carolina, I know they have approved $1,500 for the holdup on that check coming to your county here. I do not know. But I can honestly stand here and tell you, there has been a check approved for that amount. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman, if I may.
Yes.
I also heard from American Legion this morning, that particular parcel is in Gates area for Ms. Watson. And they had sent me a notice this morning on their cellphone that it's here today, and they've walked to the tax office today, just to be aware of it. So, and I had spoken to Ms. Lane too, the tax department, about this particular matter while they were waiting for the U.S. Census.
And we only learned about the situation 10 days ago.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
We just, you know, we just heard this from the podium there, unannounced. Would it be, you know, we don't see this very often. Do we want to talk about this later in the meeting? What should we do?
You have the list for presentation during your report, correct?
Do you press that at that time?
That's what you have. I think that we have to do this for the time, possibly, not on the deal plan at all.
Very good, okay.
Okay, thank you. I have a public comment from Anthony Felton, White and Road in York. Hope everyone is doing well. I would like to thank the Gates County Sheriff Department for shutting down illegal drug business and arresting the person involved in the illegal drug activity. We do not need this type of criminal activity in our community. And certainly, we're all pleased with West Rose on streets. Okay, anyone else? Knights delegations. Okay, then we'll move on to administrative reports, starting with our county manager.
This is from May 25th through June 20th. Historic courthouse, the town of Gates will agree to contract with Andrea's for the church street sidewalk repair. DOT has received the request for sidewalk assistance, but has not responded with an answer. Much of June was spent working on the fiscal year 20 budget. On June the 12th, two representatives from the local government commission visited to follow up on findings from the fiscal year $17. Overall, they were pleased with changes in progress made. They inquire about additional help and finance in the future. I indicated the position within the budget. Since the budget has been passed and has been notified, there will not be a new position for finance. Do you have any questions?
Okay, any questions for the county manager?
Or any of the LGC members, are they close in Two Gates County, the Chilwell area?
They all work in Rotherham. The commission board, I mean, the board members are scattered across the state, but the people who do day-to-day and the four are in Rotherham.
Do you know who the one that came, the individual or individuals that came here to do the audit?
You mean the follow-up? Yes.
Two of them.
Susan McCullen and Frida. Can't remember Frida's last name, I'll have to look that up. I'll send you Frida's last name, because I can't remember. And also, in that, with the new budget, we lost a part count too. That was not requested. Bunny is not good, isn't that correct? Okay, Ms. Lane, how are you?
Good morning, again, all right. I had a combination of two different reports, the monthly closeout for June, and then the fiscal year end, including a summation of our year activity. Just talking about delinquency. What we close out, leaving on the books and our percentage, we are ahead of last year's gain, 96.49% overall. We wrote off, again, we speak of those uncollected accounts, a little over 26,000 write-off for the '08 deals. By tradition, every, you know, 10 years. The general statutes really don't, doesn't say you have to write them off, they just mean you cannot use in forced collections. But most CAMA systems tag them in those '08 deals, real and personal, and those are vehicle deals. $26,086 that we kind of wrote off for those '08 deals.
Can I interrupt you there, if you don't mind? Right at the end of, I want to make sure I understood you correctly, you said about writing those off, we can't use those. I don't exactly what you said.
As in forced collection. Enforced, the general statute said that after 10 years, you cannot use enforced collections. But if somebody were to come in right before we use our, you know, write-off process every June, we could collect them. But, you know, in other words, those '08 deals are kind of off the books now. So we're, you know.
We can't even send those to Zacchaeus.
That is correct, yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah. And most CAMA systems, like I said, the regional statute, they said, you know, there's really nowhere where it says you write them off by nature. But CAMA system, tax systems are designed for that 10-year.
With a capital L.
That's right. So a lot of them.
So if, so if one of those, we'll say, let's go all the way back to 2007. 2007, it sounds like we can't put leverage to collect them, but if that 2007 property comes up for sale, we still have to lean on it, to collect them?
Well, if it's, well, if it's other than '07 or '08, we would, yes, sir. But we don't, we see a zero amount with the write-off notation. That process is done in mass, Commissioner, so it's like, you know, we tagged all the different accounts, motor vehicles included. So if we were to pull up that account, look at that '08 deal, it's got a zero balance, and it's got year-end AR write-off, end notation.
So there's no lean, the lean goes away?
More or less, yes, sir.
Okay, so if I'm going to buy a property that has a tax lien on it, and it's just got 365 days left, I think you might manage to wait a year.
Well, quite possibly, yeah. You could lose one of those, potentially, yes.
But you got, these people have 10 years.
Yeah.
They're just, but last year, the light went on the earliest.
So even though, so even though we've been active in it, the ones, in my thinking, the ones that are seven years old as of this meeting, we should go ahead and send those to Zacchaeus if they're substantial. I know some of them, we may be talking about, you know, $212 or whatever, but anyway.
Yeah, and hopefully, they already aren't at Zacchaeus. They may be with a difficult title today, but, and that's part of our goal. Every year, we look at that snapshot in time, there's just been a conversation about delinquency. We're striving towards, of course, this one is not of the same plateau as some of these others that get written off, but that's our goal, striving towards getting them so we can, you know, have them shown as payable instead of a write-off.
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking so we can be more informed.
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
I interrupted her, I should probably.
Oh, that's all right. Just a bird's eye view. Any particular questions? We had some good showing from Zacchaeus. If we looked at the 18, 19, if we looked at the total fund received, certainly, well over $116,926.16 from Zacchaeus with our foreclosure. So that process, we've been pleased about. We do have an upcoming sale July 18th. The property has been posted. Joining the property owners have been notified. That's just beyond Buckland Elementary on the left. That's a wooded lot with hardwood, underbrush, if you will, on the left, just past Buckland. The valid property. That is set for new sale July 18th. That's on Thursday, before that was announced. Any other particular questions or observations there on those reports?
I mean, we collected $116,000 from, I mean, Zacchaeus, if all us.
Yes, ma'am.
That's wonderful. That had been uncollected. Okay, thank you so much. We have a refund?
We do, yes, ma'am. One refund there that was presented. This vehicle was towed, of course, and the documentation is attached for your convenience there in the amount of $118.25.
What is the pledge of the board? I see all the documentation is with this.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the refund based on the documentation before us. I'll second that.
Okay, motions to be made, seconded and discussed. Hearing none, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes, two zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, clap. 2019 tax notices.
Yes, ma'am. Still working, striving towards that goal with the inclusion of these solid wage fees that will be included on that tax notice. Initially, the file was anticipated to get to our vendor at the end of this month. In light of that addition, that task, you know, there's a little bit of post-appointment anticipated by the second week of August, those bills going out, the tax notice.
Okay, well, thank you. I know that it was the Tax Department and the border people, customer service at the last, kind of at the last moment.
Yes, ma'am.
We appreciate your work.
With Diane Hendricks, and then helpful, resourceful, and using that teamwork as we moved towards getting those accounts and identified and coded correctly, yes.
Thank you. Okay, now we go to the foreclosures.
Yes, ma'am. Pursuant to our agreement with Zacchaeus, every summer, there, well, at least that's been our target, we don't usually like May, we usually use till our August timeframe submission to get the accounts based on that agreement with Zacchaeus Legal Services. We do this in batch submission, and we're just discussing one particular account there, but overall, you'll see some totals. We do have some of these paid in full as of yesterday evening, or official payments, people pay online, did mark those paid in full. There's a couple at the top, you know, the third and fourth from the top there were paid in full. They're wanting to mention specific names, of course, but those accounts were paid in full as of yesterday.
By the owner?
By a family, yes. Yes, out of town, actually. There was some agreement that they were paid in full.
So you're saying the one ending, 176 and 177?
That is correct, yes, sir. Also, reference, there was a, that same family name, if you will, that parcel ending in 026 was also paid in full. There was some, I think, connection in that property. This person was in New York.
On the second page?
It is, I think it was set up one or so down, and what? Yes, we go. That also, I think there's some relation or so, AR or connection there, and that was also settled. These others, there's been no response as that foreclosure letter in-house that we mailed out back in May was specific, and they had 30 days to respond, come by and make a payment towards that payment in full before we got to this step. So, in any case, these are the accounts presented for submission. Are we happy to entertain anything the board wants to do or make adjustments to?
Okay, what is, I know that the second one on the list, that would be an estate, I would think.
At this point, yeah, just probably have to reach.
That is correct. Yeah, I think perhaps a daughter is involved on some level, yes.
So you're saying the account's ready to send. The actual send date is what, after this meeting, or?
That's right. The prep work is being done. What Zacchaeus requires is the final statement of tax notice, a property record card, and an aerial map that was also sent with the batch submission. So once we get green light, we're ready to go. A lot of that work has already been done behind the scenes, it's not printed yet, ready for that submission.
Let me maybe state our situation this way. If we want to go ahead and give you direction possibly today to go forward, if we give you that direction, but you waited two weeks from today to send it, and somebody on this list came in and paid in full now, would you adjust before you send it?
Well, naturally, again, it's awkward predicament. The letter is specific in nature. If it's all not paid, what if we have a portion on the 17 deal, a couple hundred dollars, and none of the 18s, even the 19s are just around the corner? It is a case-by-case scenario with the payment amount, you know, if they resolve, you know, a letter that's specific, paid in full. So we, once we get away from that, there isn't no longer a standard. But perhaps if they did pay it in full, like our two, well, our three parcels that we touched on a month ago, they're paid in full as of yesterday evening, they paid online. So, you know, naturally, they would be removed. It's a little bit different, you know, how much is paid, you know, what's.
So, but I was speaking about in full, but you, all these people on this list, they've been sent a, like a final letter?
They have, yes.
And what is the deadline?
Yes, ma'am. And I can, I can read, I don't want to burden the board, but they were sent in May 3rd. The deadline was really, if unpaid by May 31st, then it would read to the effect of a final courtesy, your taxpayer, we are allowing you 30 days, well, 28 days from May 3rd to pay your taxes in full. If unpaid by May 31st, the property will be turned over to Zacchaeus Legal Services for immediate foreclosure. If you've already paid your taxes, please disregard this tax notice. You're currently, if you're currently under bankruptcy protection plans, also disregard and notify the tax office immediately. This notice reflects X number of payments, we would have that total current through the date it was sent. So this is kind of the standard in-house. This is kind of our kickoff letter and little foreclosure.
I appreciate your standing to the standard. I think all of us appreciate that, and outside of that, you know, that have come to us. I'm asking for, for myself, as the board, at least these questions, I'm asking for each particular person on the list, just so you know.
Right.
And to see if they want to try to do something in a quick manner that sounds like, yeah, they will accept their money, but if the letter, I mean, they, their time has passed.
Right, yes, sir. It's very odd in this particular situation, if I got a letter like this, I might be driving down to the Tax Department to really see what's going on and not wait. But in any case, that's a moot point. We're here, we're moving on, and, you know, again, it's unique. If the board identifies one particular account of any sort, that's what you, you know, hire me to do in terms of that role, and it is a standard for me. Because at the moment, I don't have a standard at the podium, those situations become awkward for me, so I leave that to the board, certainly.
Well, let me tell the board, and you might want to hear this too. I shared this with Commissioner Jones about a month ago. Someone in Ahoski, in Hurford County, asked me to go to Tax Administrator's Office in Hurford County to assist them, the tax people. And it was over $6,000 off. And so I did, I went, and they didn't budge, just to let you know. They didn't budge, any exceptions whatsoever.
Right, yes, sir.
Just to let you know.
Well, certainly, this reinforces what we're trying to accomplish, and the bird's eye of your thing, certainly, the goals. But again, it's very unique, different, you know, as we learn about unique circumstances with people medically or anything before we get to this, that, you know, we do that, we accommodate in nature, but when we don't, you know, when we don't have the feedback, it makes it unique for us. Therefore, we send a letter as my standard, being consistent in nature, you know, until we learn how to say.
I believe the situation was six or seven years in rears, I believe.
Wow, yes, sir. Thank you for sharing that, yes.
Okay, I sort of touched on Jack's comment. I know very well, you have to have a procedure when you're doing these collections. But you said these are going to be sent in a couple of days, the final paperwork is being done, they're going to be sent to Zacchaeus?
Well, we're on target. If it's, maybe we send, or even first of next week, printing, and we send it in a FedEx box, or mailer, if you will, postal mailer, either one of those two is, you know, complete files. So we're talking about PRCs and a little bit of payment work there, so.
So hypothetically speaking, we never want to turn money away, of course, when we're collecting. They get sent to Zacchaeus next week. At what point do we, are we required to pay Zacchaeus any money for the account for collection purposes, if they don't like to do anything? Let's say that the first person on the list comes in next Thursday, after the list has already been sent to Zacchaeus, nor, and they had till May 31st, the letter states that. They come in next Thursday or Friday, pretty sure Zacchaeus hasn't put any work on it yet, and they say, "Come on, two, one of the girls, and Shelly takes all the money from them." At that point, are we owed, do we have to pay Zacchaeus any money?
We do not, as long as they, we inform them there's been total payment. Now, if they begin the process, there is a situation where a recall amount per that contract, up to $800 minimum, could be charged by Zacchaeus. So that's something we wouldn't want to do too much with a recall. But if they've not touched the account, in theory, if we let them know it's paid in full, it's just a voluntary dismissal by Zacchaeus, and that letter is forwarded to the Gates County Tax Department. No charges from them, and then the account, of course, is paid in full, so. But if there is any work that has initiated, you know, by any of the paralegal staff team there, we are likely, you know, to go recall fee, so.
So in theory, like you just said, and I know you don't know, that if someone came in in the next week and paid it in full.
and paid it in full to one of your staff, you would just let Zacchaeus know that it was paid in full to disregard this one?
That's right, yeah, paid in full, zero balance, we'd send their statements, and then they would follow up with a letter, you know, for our files, appropriate to that parcel, dismissal, voluntary dismissal, that's usually how it works, with no fee or charge to the county, which is good, we don't, we don't want to get into a situation like that, certainly.
Yeah, right, I'll come up with it. So you mailed it, and they were energized, and they opened the box and started working as soon as they got it, and then somebody comes in, we still have to pay the...
If they have initiated work on, yes, ma'am. But that's a good comment, Madam Chair, because sometimes that turnaround is not as immediate, you know, there might be a little bit of delay, and so we might get payment within that timeframe, that's quite possible.
I think we would, yeah.
That's right, yes, because they've got a team working, and they might split up ten accounts, and they might start that prep work, and that's, that's a possibility too, based on their work case load.
There's nothing, so there's nothing to trigger these constituents on here. Their last, what I call trigger for them to take any action was May thirty first.
Yes, sir.
So the next thing they'll get will be hearing from Zacchaeus, which would make us have an eight hundred dollar number.
Yeah, that is right. Or they'll get that initial entry letter from Zacchaeus would be foreclosure in writing, and that'll be their first, and that'll be a more formal scenario than our in-house letter. Certainly, that's their first, next trigger, if we are, yes, sir.
Okay, well, you may be hearing from one person that I'm inquiring for.
Okay, yes, sir.
And I'd like to thank Ms. Lane, too. That unique situation from constituents in my particular area caused me to give Ms. Lane a call, and subsequently recognize the unique situation that American Legion outstanding organization was involved. And they subsequently sent me a copy of the letter, that they'd written that they were providing X number of dollars, towards fifteen hundred, if I remember correctly, on that first check. And so that caused me to give a visit to you, Ms. Lane, what you told us today. And just wanted to let you know, I appreciate your time and energy putting forth, and certainly appreciate the American Legion letting us know, and I have a copy of the check that I heard not due today, but it's supposed to be here today or this afternoon, someday.
Very good, yes, sir.
Okay, and all comments?
Well, to follow up, this would be a perfect time to address that, Ms. Watson, right? Not asking the, Ms. Lane to make any exception, or even really to make no comment on it, would probably be best unless we, unless we ask. Sometimes you have unusual situations, and keep in mind, I just told you, Herbert County made no exception for this other person, and it really should not matter whether it's five dollars or five thousand dollars. You know, when you're following the rules, you're following the rules. This is a, is a unique situation. Commissioner Freeman just showed me a copy, a photocopy of the actual check, and that was fifteen hundred dollars, this one, okay? And Ms. Lane, I will ask you again, you've received seventeen seventy-seven eighty-two, did I understand?
Well, you know, that is the balance due, except for...
That's the balance due.
Yeah, we, three hundred and fifty was the check presented on the twenty-sixth of June by the American Legion. That was their check, by the way, and personally paid in, in person.
And this check you're looking at is another check for fifteen hundred dollars?
Which totally, and as I looked at my math, it's anywhere close to right, eighteen fifty out of two thousand, that's a tax font, right?
Well, two thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars, it's a hundred and sixty-five dollar difference.
Well, if we subtract the fifteen hundred from the balance, certainly, we would be around, what, the two fifty or so threshold there remaining, with still a balance due on the eighteen tax bill, of course. Yeah, because that, this includes the seventeen bill, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-four cents on the seventeen. The eighteen bill is one thousand twenty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents, totaling one thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-two cents.
Correct. Okay, all this is two dollars?
Yeah, that does not reflect the payment at the time of my report submission. It does not get paid with three hundred and fifty dollars that were paid on the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-one fifteen minus three fifty.
Seven hundred and sixty-five.
Nearly, that would put us at three hundred dollars, no more interest until August, in theory, two seventy-seven and eighty-two cents remaining unpaid, so. If we take into into account what Commissioner Freeman mentioned with the check, potential check payment, which we, well, we're talking about, what else? We have not, not money behind her, certainly, sorry.
Yeah, we wouldn't be, I wouldn't even give addressing it to you. To this level, did I not see a photocopy of the check signed, and the check is from the American Legion?
For fifteen hundred.
For fifteen hundred dollars. Kind of mad you're not to put you on the spot, or anything, you recall any exception in your tenure?
No.
Keeping in mind, I ask all these questions for a reason. Commissioners, there's fifteen hundred dollar check that may appear this afternoon or on Friday, because it'll be closing on the fourth. If this letter gets sent, we'll lose eight hundred dollars of that check to Zacchaeus. But we're faced with making, making an exception, and we have a list here, this person's just one of, I'll say, fifty-two, for example, it looks like it might be that many. We can't make an exception for the other fifty-one, but again, this is, we're looking at a payment there. Let me ask...
Can I ask a question? If the eighteen fifty, which is, we assume is going to be paid, or we have three fifty, the other fifteen hundred, we have a copy of that's being sent, would that take care of the twenty-seventeen taxes?
It would, yes, ma'am. We just have the minimum amount, of course, on the eighteen.
Okay, and so then she would only be delinquent on the twenty-eighteenth?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, as I look through this notice, everybody on the list is multiple years.
Good point.
And so she would be dilutive one year. Of course, in about a day, she'll be, well, in all tax filth. But that would eliminate her dilutive one year.
I would, let me just, just a statement, I mean, if we make an, if we make an exception, I believe we need to be, we need to have good, very strong reason to do it, because we don't want to become habit at all.
Or the norm.
Or the norm. But I do, I see a hand up now, but for Mrs. Kiker, I was actually getting ready to ask Mr. Kiker a question. Ms. Kiker, would you come to the podium if you want? Madam Chair, if you want.
All right.
And, and for Commissioner Jones, I, while we recognize, excuse me, gentlemen, I might have understood there's another check, which I mentioned earlier.
That's mine.
The other thing I just kind of wanted to talk about in our discussion is I would see that this, the uniqueness of this is the mere fact that we have a high side organization versus a family member. And I think a lot of other cases would have a family member or promise or so versus an organization.
And it doesn't go unnoticed by me, and I'm sure nobody else, that the American Legion here on July the third with, with what we'll call a promise or whatever. Well, my question, and I saw you raised your hand, I was just ready to ask you to come up, but let me ask my question first. Following back from Commissioner Freeman, you did indicate that, that you're in the process of raising the balance?
Yes, sir.
Okay, which we understand is...
Throw over three hundred dollars.
Okay, in that range. Okay, and you raised your hand for a question.
After, you have some information that Johnny Farmer shared with me, and I didn't say anything about it. Ms. Amber is a disabled veteran. Her husband was in service and lost his life in a training accident. I don't know how long ago that was. I don't know why she was so long in doing anything. But as you well know, when people apply for some help, especially with American Legion, there's a lot of I's to be dotted and T's to be crossed, and so that process took a while. And we was notified of the situation the last Monday in, was it June? And so we've only had about ten days, and we've been working on it. And so I don't know if that information will help you in your op, but I wish I had the date from those events that happened, because when people have that thing happen in their life, it's trauma comes into effect too. But I just don't have those dates. Thank you.
Does anyone have anything else they would like to say?
Well, I'm certainly in favor of recognizing when a high side organization steps up to assist one of our citizens.
And I don't know that this would occur, but we're going to imply in common sense the loss of eight hundred dollars to the county's cash register. If that were to occur, I, I think that we would have grounds of having a gentleman here representing the American Legion, who's already stepped up, and we see their, their commitment, that they've already committed three hundred and fifty dollars, and now fifteen hundred. They've done that in a short period of time, from the previous, the last Monday, I believe, I heard, in June, just a real short period, they've come to this, disabled veterans assistance. I think we have enough documentation to make this an exception without, I'll say, exception without risk. County manager, if we were to have a motion to, to give extension of fifteen days, would we, we would take a vote, if there was a motion like that, we would take a vote, and we would instruct our tax administrator to, to act in that court?
If that's what the motion is that passes, and you do have a being, being on hold of fifteen?
We're not held by authority in that.
And of course, she's the expert on the tax fix.
Would you like to advise?
In all honesty, I just see a precedent, I'm sorry, I'm vocal with that, but I would think it sets a precedent for the job I do, quite frankly. I mean, but again, it's up to the board, by all means. I, you know, it's unique in the way that I am appointed for the collection and the other duties naturally, as a sister, but it does perhaps leave a little bit, that it might set precedent for future. I'll just mention that.
Well, Lisa, thank you, thank you for doing that. We want to, we want our tax administrator to...
Yeah, that's typically the way, way it would be, the next person, X Y Z citizen in a Menzil Township might have the same scenario, so what about that, if I want to say? And you mentioned the recall, just speak to that. Chair Holker made a good point about the turnaround time. As she mentioned, them being interviewed, it's very unlikely that they tear open that box and start right away. There possibly is a windowed time, they're not going to touch those accounts. So the recalls that we have had have been very few, and they've been for different things, not really payment of taxes. They've been mapping issues or some other unique cases that D County has been sent that recall bill. Payment of taxes, that's not been one of those, where they, you know, I'll just use that just for their knowledge. That's, they've been mapping or some other, other old property on one fifty-eight was a unique situation. And the one where the church had eminent domain and drum field, that was another recall situation that we had, you know, with some mapping. I just mentioned that, just for the board's knowledge. I know they're concerned about recall, but that's a little thing for it, to have payment of taxes, and then we get a recall.
Also, on this list, how many of these people would you say? I mean, I understand, I understand, but, you know, is it slippery slope?
My, my, my comment, and I applaud what you guys do, because you have to treat everybody equal when you're collecting. But as, as you just said, Commissioner, it's a, it's a unique situation. I can tell you, unique enough that there's somebody on the list that I know that sends the meetings every day, this person's going to get a phone call, and I'm hoping you're going to get that money in the next few days, and it's not going to be easy, and I plan to ask them why they, why they haven't paid. But as Commissioner Owen said, we just had a situation in the neighboring county for a larger amount, and they didn't budge. You're adamant on setting precedent for the future.
Yes, sir.
And, and that's what we have to remember, it's, it's a unique situation. What's going to be the next time? You know, like you said, it was, May thirty first was the cutoff, and Reverend Kiker said they found out about it, you know, the June meeting. So it's a unique situation, it's a win-lose, lose-win, whatever you want to call it. Because we risk the chances of having paid eight hundred dollars to Zacchaeus. Do we take a chance, or do we not take a chance?
I think I have another solution. Without us compromising the integrity of what you are charged with doing, the fact that we use Zacchaeus is this board's decision to do that. So I think all we have to do is vote to advise our tax administrator to send this list to Zacchaeus on August the first, and we resolve the whole situation.
Is that...
Her last date's supposed to be July thirty first, so that's what I was clarifying.
Yeah, but...
July thirty first? July thirty first.
Well...
It's, we're not mandated to ever send the letter, because it's our, this is just a legal firm that we chose to take care of our, our staff orders.
Then it's, say, guide us a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that we would not have paid.
That's right, yeah.
I mean, they do have, they can have...
It's not changing anything, it's, 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 but they're going to do what they're going to do, they're going to begin doing what they're going to do on July thirty first, rather than next week. We're talking, we're talking about them getting this sixteen to seventeen days later than they would normally get if she goes back to her office and sent it.
Jack, on that, Reverend Kiker, I'm nodding, yes, sir, no. If given three more weeks, you think you'd have time to collect that money? Is that, if we wait till August the first, is that going to mess you up, Ms. Lane?
Well, I mean, she needs to have a time to get it done before the lease.
That, I mean, that being said, if the money, you know, we get the payment of funds, I mean, we do have the holidays, we've got some, you know, issues of resolving tax assistance, so my time is... assistance, so my time is, and Miss Chavis' time focused on getting these accounts ready. So, it, it, you know, might not be right away, but we, we begin to assemble all the documentation, so we're ready when you folks give the green light in terms of that, with approval, so...
So, without, without any of this conversation, this was gonna go out like that? When are we gonna be ready?
About the end of the next week, or so, with the, the package and everything together, with the payments, um, because August is the threshold of time, we'd like to get those to Zacchaeus. So they have, you know, within relative good order per our contract, so... But then, if we get payment, you know, but those were, in theory, we would delete them anyway, we wouldn't, we'd just pull them out, but we don't know that, I mean, we don't hopefully get payment on a particular account. I mean, as we're printing the items and assembling all the documentation...
Mr. Kiker said here, he's here in our conversation, and he's gonna go get on his cell phone and say, fellas, we only have ten more days, we only have seven more days, and they'll probably get it done. That's just conversation, it doesn't mean anything. But very likely that, that could take place. But the, the second situation or solution I, I mentioned treats everybody on this list the same, or it, it makes no exception for Ms. Watson, everybody else will benefit, if there's a benefit to anybody, everybody will benefit from it. And I don't think that sets any precedence. The next time this list comes up the force, I'll ask the same question, is it going out? It's not gonna be told, we'll be told. Good luck.
Um, my only concern with that, Jack, would be her last day is August the first, in case there's, or July thirty first, in case there's any hiccups. With Zacchaeus, they had the initial questions, I guess they would reach out...
No, Ms. Lord Chavis, Ms. Lord Chavis would be your point contact, certainly, for the like on the apps, you know, that one.
I, I think we should back it up a few days, just, just because, um, but...
Make it a Monday?
Manager, I'd like to make a motion, if that's okay?
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that the tax administrator proceed with sending the accounts to Zacchaeus Legal Services presented to us after the date of July twenty second.
Okay, that's the Monday following our meeting on...
Fifty.
Three weeks.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, a motion has been made, and voted in the second, in a discussion. The motion is to authorize, uh, authorize the tax administrator to send the list to Zacchaeus on July the twenty second.
On after July twenty second, when you're ready, I guess then.
Oh, thank you, reasonable, certainly, yes.
Okay, so, I, everybody prepared a vote? All votes in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All votes. Okay, it passes four, zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, um, any, um, department reports?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. Ma'am, I have a question about one.
Okay.
How, how long ago was that new roof installed in courthouse?
A year ago, and it's under twenty years since it was signed. And I'm just having email that I'm gonna read to you there, in case you hear them, they're up on the roof, they're running water, and that they will fixing things today and provide, will face with dimensions, they're going to, they've already made the decision to enlarge the rain hoods on the intakes up to the units, to prevent rain from blowing in.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may comment on that same, um, as you know, I've escorted around to damaged areas, and they include, so I know the other commissioners have had the chance to see this, with a, you know, we didn't have a roof repaired, we had a complete roof put on, uh, this court, uh, building complex, and now with the price tag, just roughly...
About two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, we did do a patch, they had a complete roof put on. The damage that I was showing today was jury room, the judge's chamber, the law library, the two hallways, um, bathrooms, two bathrooms, the clerk's office, and the state had to replace the copier in the clerk's office. The extent of the damage was that there were puddles of water in the judge's chamber, where you could put your, this is what I was told, where you could put your foot down and see the water come up from there. Being from the, the, you know, we have a warranty, as spoken, but having some insurance background, I think that we should file an insurance claim against their liability insurance company. And I, and if they, if we do, they will send an adjuster out here, and they will pay for the, uh, for the materials, the damage, they would put new carpet in there on that floor. And I think that is the action that we need to, to do. We paid two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and, you know, there, there may be four or five screws up there that are loose, that water's getting around, and that's, you know, things like that happen, but this company is a, is a general contractor, or they would not have gotten a job. They pay insurance for a reason, and we have damage, and it shouldn't follow us in any way. Um, we, we really shouldn't even use the warranty on this, because really the warranty is, is gonna be workmanship and materials, but they put a roof on that, we have some damage that's not roof related, but it's not the physical roof, it's things inside, it's that carpet, and, and I'm of the opinion, and I'll ask for other comments, I'm of the opinion we should file an insurance claim, and what I can tell you about filing insurance claims is, when you know you got damage, you do it right away, you don't wait until later.
And that's a good point, 'cause we don't even, and the crystal doesn't wanna use any money to replace tiles and stuff like that, and it's not, it's not, shouldn't bother her, or the citizens, or the county.
It would be, it would be up to the state, though, for the copier, because she asked about the copier, and they, none of their equipment is covered by us, provided our insurance, that is all covered by the state.
Would roll over, because of the insurance?
We didn't pay, we have nothing to do with any of their equipment, none of their insurance, so that's all on the state.
But if...
They would have to file.
Then if it came and slipped on water on the hallway, the bell, wouldn't that, can't we subjugate that back to the carrier that had to hold it?
Well, we're actually the landlord, we're actually the landlord, so our tenant has suffered damage.
Well, so I would, I would include the copier, let it be paid, let it be denied. And I'm not so sure, I believe the copier would be covered, since the covers in our building is actually landing. I too got some messages, if you don't mind, about the cord ice, uh, and what was brought forward is a roof leaking to the extent that the judge's chambers left Superior Court this week, and Superior Court judge could not use his chambers, and, uh, and that's, that's a reflection of Gates County. Uh, the other thing, and I did, have not looked, the flag was in the threads, and understand we have one that has not been replaced, uh, don't know anything about that.
I front, well, I...
I've not noticed, and no one's brought it to my attention that... She said that she knew it, but she hadn't ordered one, and it's being replaced today, it has survived the day.
Okay, so, um, what is the pleasure of the board, Commissioner Owens, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Or a directed?
Mm-hmm. Um, which, which would be a proper directed or motion?
I would, I would, I would tell Christie, because Christie handles insurance.
Okay, all right, I'll make a form of a motion. Um, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that county manager, um, take action, file an insurance claim against the roofing contractors and insurance company for damage to the copier in the clerk's office. The carpet in the judge's chamber, anywhere there's carpet, I'll, I'll leave it like that, anywhere there's carpet, anywhere there's tile, ceiling tile damage, and anything she sees fit to add to it, and that we do it immediately.
It should be a mold reduction as well, including that insurance.
So I'll, I'll include in my motion, um, eradication, or whatever the proper word might be, testing for mold, and the eradication of it. I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, a motion has been made, and said about insurance claim against roofing company liability insurance for carpet, tile, copier, mold testing, and eradication. Is there any painting that would need to be redone?
I'm not seeing any painting where the paint has popped up in any of those areas.
Can we add if necessary, painting if necessary?
Okay, any informed discussion? The motion on the floor is to file an insurance claim against the roofing company's liability insurance. All votes in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, now we'll move on to public hearings, we only have one public hearing today, the rezoning request for M&amp;J Farms, LLLC, um, Mrs. Cherry, everybody, may I ask a director? Good morning.
Good morning, how are you? All right, we're here for rezoning requests to amend zoning. I've been someone to represent today, Chris Vance, and the request is to amend zoning on a plus or minus six point one zero eight for parcel identified as six oh five, North Carolina thirty-two South, Sunbury, North Carolina two seven nine seven nine, parcel number zero six zero zero three six two, being south of Bosley Road, north of Muddy Cross Road, East Design Road, west and adjacent to US Highway thirty-two South and Hundreds Mill Township. The property is currently zoned A1 agricultural, and request is to resent the parcel to I one industrial for the purpose of operating a machine shop.
Okay, um, we'll, at this time, we will have a motion to enter into public hearing.
So, second.
Motion's been made, and promptly second, all votes in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, would anyone like to speak concerning this zoning request? Well, there's no rush to the podium. Last chance. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So move, second.
Okay, a motion's made, promptly second, all votes in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, the planning board, uh, approve this rezoning, uh, the documentation is here, uh, the pleasure of the board.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, reallow this rezoning to take place.
Okay.
And I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, a motion's been made, and promptly second to rezon, uh, this parcel, zero six zero zero three six two, on Highway thirty-two, at six oh five, um, in C thirty-two, uh, in a discussion. It's right down from, like, half a mile from me, I'm very, uh, familiar with it. It has been a lumber mill, so it's been in, in Dutch school for a long time. All votes in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All votes opposed? Okay, that's done.
Thank you.
And thank you for opening the business of Gates County.
Thank you.
Amen.
Okay, um, old business, the repeal of personnel ordinance. This brought before us, um, no one has come forward with any additional thing, uh, comments since we looked at it before. What is the pleasure of the board? Silence. Okay, I'll make a motion to repeal the current personnel ordinance. It will have a second. If there's no second, it will die. Has anyone come forward with any new information? Any comments? I believe Commissioner Owens was the one who asked for it to take.
Um, I haven't had any more, um, comments with the two parties, and I mentioned it, not by name, but the two parties, since the last meeting, so I was waiting to see if there's any other...
No one has come forward with any, with any concerns still.
And if I may, uh, Madam Chair, and Commissioner Owens, I've had several people contact me, both, uh, county employees, as well as former county employees, with, with lots of concerns as pertaining to, to that.
I would appreciate it if you'd brought it forward, they, we can amend the personnel policy as it had been presented, but all the comments that I heard was that they thought that, especially as related to vacation, and some other sections, it made the departments easier to operate, and it was also giving a benefit, had such as more lead to employees, because that was one of the benefits.
And I think most of their concerns, or at least a big concern, was, uh, the elimination of personnel board.
Again, no one ever submitted any comments to that.
And their concerns, uh, their concerns were, they didn't wanna bring forward some administration, because of retaliation.
We're, we're addressing this because of maps, but...
Right, they recommended, and I, I'll reserve some comments for closed session, if everyone's personnel policy.
Okay, um, so let me just say, we, again, we are addressing this because of the maps process that I went through, um, not because we didn't have any good personnel ordinance prior to that, so it's not like we're, um, it's not like we're, um, not happy with what we currently have. So, um, Madam Chair, I don't know, you didn't get the mode a second, so the motion is, sounds like it is going to die, do we, if it does, we don't even have to consider, um, tailing it, just somebody would have to bring it back up.
All right, we would continue to operate with the personnel ordinance that we currently have.
And we are meeting in closed session, the personnel?
Yes.
Okay, I, the only thing I will say, that this new policy kinda goes along with what the map has set up, and it's kinda like, you buy one part, but don't buy the same part. Okay, so the motion dies, so there's no, um, need to... Okay, so the motion dies, so there's no need to adopt another. Okay, new business resolution established against county twenty twenty census complete county committee. County manager?
This resolution. Resolution, which, well, the date will be corrected and if we realized it was a titular thing with the wrong date, where it says adopted, the hard copy's been corrected. But this came from the census group, if you remember last time. If the lady's not even gonna do apologize, was here again, since she passes, and this is what she submitted. And then of course, if you do that, then someone will have to hit this up.
Do we think we need to read this resolution?
That is a good discretion.
Consider, I remember the lady coming, I have read this. The establishment, the selection of, of the people heading it, heading it up. And is that in one particular where it has been?
At the end.
And the committee shall consist of up to forty members representing the four cross section of Gaze County population. It's particularly important that committing of strong organizations from organizations that serve populations that are most likely to be underpining.
Okay, to sort of revisit previous census taking, the Reba was in charge.
I was not here until I did my note.
I think she was the chair, is that correct?
They, they do not have those, sorry. According to my homework, there was no official complete county committee back ten years ago. You know, whether that's correct or incorrect, but that was what someone who sort of had their hands in it a little bit explained to me after we got the resolution, I'll mix up somebody. It was, it was not Reba, it was someone that worked with her.
I know that Reba, there were some warrants that you gave away as a promotional thing, she gave me some of those, I got them from her. And, and I figured out, and I just, she may have had a chairperson over her, she was just somebody else doing that. The only thing, only thing I would want to discuss before we adopt the resolution is, are we gonna be, are we gonna have our hands on selection of committee? And, and is forty members too many, you know, sometimes you can have too many.
Well, it says up to forty, I think forty is too many, but it's too unwilling.
Right, I agree.
Well, all they're really supposed to do is go out and talk to citizens to encourage them to participate.
Yeah, go to the civic organizations, the churches.
So they're.
They're not the paid staff.
Right.
Just census actors, like they'll have their own staff, it goes door to door, this is just a word of mouth marketing committee.
What, what is the plan of action or how number three will be done, Madam Chair?
Number three, each municipality and county to recommend one elected official, but we only have one municipality, that's Gaze County.
Well, after reviewing that, if I may speak, Madam Chairman, I recall, and I'm gonna enjoy putting something on Commissioner Jones' back. But he was involved with, with the census county, in that year, ten years ago, did I hear you speak to the lady?
Yes.
Is that, that maybe we would consider having Commissioner Jones be our elected official in charge of that.
In charge of his chair position, yes, in charge of chair.
That's right, that doesn't, that doesn't take care of the three, three is the municipality. Not the county.
Well, there's still, I think, has to be a chair.
Yeah.
Or someone from the county as well, even though this does say municipality.
I would say absolutely, I'd take a chair.
Okay, are you making a record today, should you appoint?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then we have a second to appoint Commissioner Jones to head it up.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, in discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
If I'm against his motion, can we discuss that?
This is a discussion.
This is a discussion.
This is a discussion.
When you're fighting.
I'm not walking into, gonna fight with a knife. I'm okay with that, I don't have anything negative saying against commission agreement, ever, ever.
Okay, so you said you could do, do it.
I'll call the vote, actually.
Okay, call the vote on this resolution for the Gaze County commissioners.
No, I think you will call the vote to appoint him.
Oh, appoint him, okay, I was gonna say. Okay, well, do the resolution to appoint Commissioner Jones to be the head of the commission? Or committee, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, now we have the resolution in front of us.
Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution establishing the Gaze County twenty twenty census complete county committee.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded and we see the requirements done by our, and like I say, just try to get, make sure everyone is kind. I do think forty is a little large, I don't think, because that's just.
If I may ask, any material that's already come in or that will be coming in?
Probably comes from your ethics, right?
Because I mean, that may be.
Any, I actually reached out to Ms. Richards after the last meeting, knowing what I knew about Reba last time. She said it would be the area's program specialist, I think the paid person that Melissa was talking about, that would be the liaison with the CCs for each county, she said.
I've got that contact, I'll give you.
Okay. Did we, the motion has been made, I mean, the motion's been made, seconded, we are all, so we have voted? I'm not sure. I didn't think we had voted, okay, well, actually, did they? We voted on.
They didn't make the motion to accept it, had they?
Yeah, I think exactly.
They, we had any discussion thing, and then we got back by who's, who's sent stuff to. Okay, motion's been made, it's been properly seconded, we've had a discussion, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, that passes. Okay, the next one is EMS contract, it was sent to us by email. I know there is, I can see that storing the buses here. Would you like to come forward and comment?
While I'm just gonna, I have, I received just two comments, one on the second page, in the second paragraph where it talks about allocation. Been recommended that the second sentence include the word, after the word increase and or decrease. And then there has been a comment about adding in some information requiring a financial audit by outside of her.
Okay, I have seen the comments, those comments, does anyone else have comments that they would like to concern contract? I know that with the five departments, we require them to give us information twice a year. Since this is eight hundred and twelve thousand dollars, is that sufficient for you all?
Well, I know what our outside audit looks like, and you have to have two attorneys sit inside you to read it, is that fair statement?
But you also have, but they also, you can find it in all.
And I think the cost, last time we heard, expected to be around eight thousand dollars. Didn't somebody throw that number around in here?
Is that what you did?
And I, I asked several, contacted three different county parks, and they all said a starting cost would be right around eight, and they clock in. And so however long it takes them to do it after, they'll be clocking in.
Well, we, you know, the school, the board of education does a, a side audit.
Yeah.
And that's how.
There's probably one eight thousand, you know, which were the comments that we heard from the public. Again, this is a positive, it's not to be negative, was about accountability. And I'm not opposed to adding it to the contract.
Are we gonna pay for it?
We don't pay for the board of education.
They're also the public, they're also the public government.
But, I mean, we don't pay for theirs and we don't pay, this is what they are, are not.
They're, they're contracted.
They will pay for it.
They will pay for it.
If they, well, do you have the authority to approve the contract today?
No, sir, these changes were not sent out to my board, I sent what was sent to you all, so they haven't seen any of it.
I'm gonna recommend, Madam Chair, Madam County Manager, the second from the last paragraph. Excuse me, bottom page, I don't have it printed out, I figured it appeared today, so I'm looking it on my email. Where I suggested shall be evaluated for increase or decrease, I think you just need to say shall be evaluated annually. Just take out increase or decrease. To run after the allocation of second twelve, which shall be evaluated annually.
It's on that second, is the sentence, how does it read, is the second page?
The one she was.
This second, paragraph, second sentence?
Shall be evaluated and then you remove the form.
Just move the word increase?
Yeah.
Remove it and put nothing.
Shall be evaluated annually, so you move the word for, but shall be evaluated annually.
Okay.
All thing I have heard, and this is, there was concern that we have a wonderful board of directors with the.
EMS.
EMS, but maybe that should be a person appointed to the EMS board who had EMS.
Training experience.
Experience and knowledge because of the technical knowledge side of it.
But we, we appoint those.
Yeah, we appoint those.
And we appoint them to apply, I think we got one application last, one application last year? Was it, was it number one?
We have several.
We have several, yeah, but that's something that we should look at, making sure that someone that is, who has knowledge. Because usually our, the contract is saying now you have two ambulances staff to the paramedic level. I would assume paramedic level, one person that's a paramedic owns be an EMT or lower, I mean, EMT, you wouldn't have two parameters, no?
Not necessarily, there would be one on each truck.
Yeah, one on each truck, but we just want to make sure, because sometimes there's been misunderstandings.
Your vehicle.
With, during the discussion about EMS, you know, what, you had a, when you knew what you were talking about, and sometimes we didn't know, like, when you're talking about truck, you were talking about twenty-four seven, you know, to, to take full people. When, when you said truck, some people just think of the vehicle, so I just wanted to clarify that paramedic, one paramedic on the truck and all person will be an EMT.
Your emergency manager is on that board also, who has EMS experience. One of the, the last board member you all appointed, Steve Stallings from Mintonville District, has previous experience with a volunteer, a career volunteer, retired from the department.
And like I say, that was comments afterward in the community.
So, Steve Stallings, so Steve Stallings was the most recent, recent appointed member of the board.
And he was, he retired.
And Billy's status, Billy Lynn's status on the board is not advisor, he's a full board member.
He's a voting member, and that position is held to the emergency management director and EMS system coordinator for the county. So if Billy retires, whoever you hire in that job will hold that slot on the board as well.
It is, I think it's a fair statement to say that if you've been out of the actual hands-on in seven, I'll say five to seven years, there's been so many dramatic changes. That have Billy on there as what I would call current, I think we've got that addressed.
And a county employee as well.
Yeah, right.
Madam Chair, is affordable motion?
Okay, I would just, is, does anyone else have any, people spoke to them concerned about EMS?
Well, you, you brought up the word audit, so I think we need to be, I think we need to be on the record where we stand on that, it's not currently in the contract. So if we approve the contract from our side of the table, we'll be approving it with the change, the verbiage change that we're, we're just talking about. And with the inclusion of an audit feature or not, so we won't, if we're approving our side of the contract today, County Manager, they can't approve theirs until they have a board meeting, how does that, how does that affect us?
Well, they don't approve one, we send over, we're on the vote.
Strong.
Yeah, we're on the vote.
Because July one's in the contract, right?
Well, no, because you never, the language is still the same as that, you've never terminated the whole contract.
Okay, so we are under contract, and what we're gonna do, if we give anything today, we use it today's day.
But you won't put any date on it until you both sign.
Okay, so I think we've had enough discussion on the audit, and I, and I hate to see them spend that money, but we need to address what the, what the public has said.
Well, I think one of the concerns, I don't know, it's, I think, when you get, when the county is investing eight hundred and twelve thousand dollars, they had, got these unaccountability. In the last two years, they've run deficits. And, you know, why are they running deficits, are they, you know, is it money, is it a problem of money flow? You know, being the reimbursement's coming in at not regular pounds or what? Or is it they are ordering things and don't incorporate money, set it aside, and they spend it on something else before it comes in? Because when you order something, it might be six months later.
Well, the thing to remember is, an audit is, is not gonna tell you how to manage.
Not if they don't, you.
I mean, even in a re, even after the year, they're, they're auditing a year that, that is in history, they're not gonna come in and say, if you bought your gas over here.
No, I know that.
So all they're doing is, they're saying, they're gonna do their revenues and their expenditures and, you know, it's, and, and they're gonna take the, the most current bank statement. And they're gonna say, yep, they match, and you run a check for eight thousand dollars, is what really, and, and I'm just stating what we heard. And I, this is not with an opinion or, or any rigid suggestion, but. What we really heard was control from the public. Oversight and almost management and control of where the money's spent. And I'm not, I'm not saying we need to do that, but I don't think that the audit, knowing what the audit is gonna, is gonna cover, is really. County Manager, am I wrong? I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna be revenue and expenditures and does checking account match, is what, all it's gonna be at the tune of eight thousand or eight thousand dollars plus.
And we're currently doing that through an independent CPA, not our bookkeeper, through, through, I think it's, in Murphysboro, CPA, in Murphysboro, he prepares the nine ninety and does an informal audit. Whenever the board was formed in two thousand and, whenever we first formed it, they tasked me with going to find a CPA to do the audit. So I talked to several different CPAs, I ended up at one of the board members' requests to go see Brad McLean in Murphysboro, that's who does the, the tax preparation. And he said, if nobody needs a formal audit, do not pay me for a formal audit, let me prepare your nine ninety, because I do exactly what you just said, I look at your bank statements versus your accounting. I look at your bank statements versus your accounting, and say everything matches, I perform, I prepare the nine nineties for the federal government, and it's an informal audit, and it doesn't cost you eight thousand dollars.
Um, so let me, uh, I hear what you're, what you're saying there, um, your board meets how?
Quarterly.
Quarterly.
Unless there's no business and no help.
And when you meet, when you meet quarterly, you're providing your board members with the, with the activity?
They see a trial balance, they see what you all saw for a whole year, they see it every quarter.
And, and I don't think I've heard your board say that they would be opposed to submitting that copy to us. I didn't hear that from anybody. Um, and we're in the process of working on a solution for next year's budget, you know, already. Uh, so we're gonna be, you know, be thinking about that. So I, I think I would say, let's not include the audit on, based on the comments coming from the director, um, there, that they are having a, um, informal audit, um, done by their CPA, and that we'd be opposed to sharing quarterly reports with us, that we don't put the word audit in, because some things may happen quickly, um, and I'm trying to get ahead of the curve. But next year, that we just make the, uh, change on, mentioned, uh, striking for increase on the second page.
Okay, but since we do require by appointment to at least hand in the financial statements, we, I would think we need to say we would have to get the four...
Make that part of the contract.
And that's part of your ordinance already, that we follow as well.
Because we have the free markets, the, the outside agencies getting a lot of money from the county.
So what do we get from fire departments, right, that is yearly or is it semi?
Semi.
Semi, and, and what do y'all provide right now, Storm?
We were doing it annually. I think the ordinance reads annually or quarterly. And we'll do it quarterly. I'll send it to you monthly if you want.
Yeah, quarterly, okay. Um, we need to, um, vote on this and then... Okay. Okay, we need a motion.
And Madam Chairman, before we leave the discussion, this period of discussion, I'd like to say too, that, so all of us aware of it, when, when you asked the question, had anybody heard? Yes, and we are continuing to hear from our citizens in reference to, for EMS and funding from the county.
That's right.
On his side.
Okay, um, yeah, we would continue, or I hope someone stopped it on ice this week. Um, so I just... Okay, we want to take a break, um, possibly?
Yeah, I've, I've got an emergency call.
Okay, so we're gonna take a five-minute break. Okay, I think everybody's back. Um, and at this time, we were going to, uh, consider the contract, EMS, the resolution.
Okay, um, so after hearing everybody, I was, uh, I was gonna make a motion, but before I do that, I wanna tell me how, how the group wants me to word the audit, or, uh, or the, the...
Just say, it's given quarterly reports.
Quarterly reports, quarterly.
The same ones it gives in board of directors or whatever.
Unless, uh, quarterly or every six months, spanned by that CPA.
No, I, this is not, this, this is just what they do in ice.
But, but as he indicated, the budget ordinance says anyone who receives money gives us a yearly report or quarterly to receive funding.
The ordinance.
Right.
County, you're asking one or the other.
Right. Right.
So we want four, this way, okay?
And the one that I changed the word in on the second page.
Um, Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a, a motion, uh, based on our EMS contract. Then on the second page of the contract, we strike the two words for increase, not adding anything in its place. And request that the, uh, EMS present us with quarterly reports. Quarterly financial reports.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman.
Motion's been made promptly second, in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, we will hear back. Um, when does your board meeting end?
The next meeting is September, but what I'll do is, once we make those adjustments, I'll send it to them and they'll, they'll respond by...
We have a meeting, um, on the twenty, fifteen, on the fifteenth. But of course, if they, they approve or buy any changes, we won't have to, we can just sign it.
And if I get it signed tomorrow, it won't be tomorrow, it's the fourth. If I get it, once I have the adjustments, if I get it signed immediately.
What's that?
You have the authority to, I mean, we made a motion to adopt it with those charges.
Okay.
I don't see that they'll have any problem taking that.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for all of y'all, too. Okay, at this time, do we have, this is the end of our new business. Will we go to citizens' comments? None? Okay, we'll go, oh, yes, ma'am. Ms. Pittman, how are you?
I'm okay.
She's gonna tell us, right?
State your name and address.
I know the drill, buddy. Charlie's with Gaffly here.
Oh.
My name is Mary Ann Gittin, on your side at one seven nine U.S. Highway, one fifty-eight Business East in Gatesville. Um, at June meeting, I made some comments with reference to the old courthouse. Those comments were made based on information that was disseminated at this meeting in March, which is that basically the county contribution to the renovations of the old courthouse was supposed to be in the neighborhood of two hundred thousand dollars, and the two hundred fifty thousand dollars coming from elsewhere. The end result appears to be that the county's going to be on the hook for about eight hundred and twenty thousand, since we've only received seventy thousand dollars in contributions. That's a pretty sizable cost overrun, which is what I was referring to, Ms. Hoffler. Um, I didn't list lead anybody, and my intention is not to do so. And, um, what I'd like to see through the future is that we put things in place, procedures in place, to keep things like this from happening. I understand that you feel you've got the situation in hand now, but as Mr. Owens admitted at the time, there were some problems in the management project, and I'd like to see us take steps to see that this kind of thing doesn't happen again. This county doesn't have money to, we can't afford this management. We just plain don't have the control around. And as a result, other things are suffering. The first priority needs to be that the citizens get services. We need our teachers, we need our EMS vehicles, um, we need a senior citizen center. These are all important services that we can't put aside because we've got a problem with the project. And, um, I'd say I appreciate that people seem to have gotten things under control, but we can't afford to have it happen again. Citizens are getting aggressive, and our tax base is not such at this time that we can afford to just keep putting taxes up. Um, there are people in the county that can't afford to pay it, so, um, vigilance on this issue is necessary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think, well, I was, it, the project was numerous years old and was predates some of us on the board. Um, concerned with that. Okay, anyone else? Okay, starting down with Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank citizens for coming today. Hope you all get out and enjoy the board, but we'll have to weather it. And remember, while we're celebrating, remember, we're thankful for our people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I, uh, I would first like to say, and sometimes it skips by, by all of us, but Chairwoman Hoffler, Commissioner Owens, Commissioner Jones, all participated in one of the warrior event we have in the county. Now, we're about eight years old with that, and we have a bunch of warriors here. They celebrate, they come back, and they develop friendships and, uh, and light the gates, kind of, when they do come. So I want to thank these commissioners. I know Chairwoman Hoffler also had her church involved, and certainly appreciate that. Um, I'd like to say that, uh, that what we see is a relationship between our citizens and the board members. We certainly appreciate that contact and those relationships. We do, uh, we do cherish those, and when you ask us, uh, to listen to you, we do listen, and when you ask us to, uh, to provide our information to our fellow commissioners, we're welcome to do that, and if you ask us not to, we also understand why. So, uh, again, thank you for, uh, for being a citizen, and thank you for being involved in our work.
All right, and everybody, celebrate the fours tomorrow, and, uh, not just having fun, but really giving thought to, uh, what it's all about. Sacrifices made for, for us that we, um, enjoy today. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
I too heard that everyone enjoys the four, and as Commissioner Owens just said, a lot of people have made sacrifices. So that we have the freedom to sit here and discuss and probably provide issues before the county. Uh, everybody has a variety of opinions, and it would be great if we could do everything that, for everyone. But sometimes you have to make some hard choices. Um, I also, I asked you to keep our thoughts and prayers for Commissioner Jordan. He certainly wanted to be here today, but did not cause a criminal commitment or, or he had, but to keep him in our thoughts and prayers as we do for. Um, at this time, we will enter into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one eight, eleven A, for personnel. Um, we'll give you, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Absolutely.
I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, we, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Would it give you a couple minutes, clear the room, so we can enter in closed session? A motion to come out of closed session?
Submove, second.
Motion's been made promptly second, in discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Submove, second.
Motion's been made in second to adjourn, in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Happy four.